Call the special meeting of October, what's today, 16?
Seventeenth.
Seventeenth, wow, time flies when you're having fun. Of October 17th to order. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Peter Talbot.
Here.
Jim Jenks.
Here.
Don Walsh.
Here.
David Belver.
Here.
John Mylone.
Here.
Fiona Pearson. Tricia Kramer. Greg Wolfe.
Here.
And Dina Allard.
Here.
A quorum is present.
Please join me in the pledge.
Pledge and live to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sure, we're going to start tonight with acceptance and appropriation of $3,000 donation from the Friends of the Library for the Library of Things. And Mr. Wolfe.
Be resolved that the town council approves Resolution Number 101724-1. Be it resolved that the town council accepts and appropriates $3,000 from the Friends of the Cheshire Library to the library gift account to start a Library of Things to circulate non-traditional items such as lawn games, musical instruments, and home improvement tools.
Thank you, Mr. Wolfe. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. We have a motion and a second. Shaun, do you want to give us a quick?
Just that, yeah, this is not from tax dollars. These are from the funds of the Friends of the Cheshire Library. And as the motion indicates, this is for a Library of Things, which is an opportunity for folks to check out, again, these sort of non-traditional library items such as lawn games, musical instruments, and home improvement tools. This has become something of, innovative libraries such as ours have kind of ventured into some of these additional borrowing options for folks that may not have regular, either have them themselves or regular need for those kind of specific tools. And they can now borrow them free of charge.
So is the, is the $3,000 then to procure some of these items, or?
That's right.
Questions?
So, are these going to be like, like what you said, $3,000 doesn't go to buy a lot? Especially if you're talking about home improvement tools. Will they be adding to this, or is this going to be something that the town's going to, I mean, it's going to be a budget line item somewhere, or?
I think that for now, it's just the $3,000.
But they could be getting donations, right?
But it's, and they've, you know, there's other non-book related items they've checked out over the years, including, you know, they had a seed library, they have, I think they did have some garden tools and other stuff that they were.
The only thing I get concerned about when you're talking garden tools, you know, somebody borrows a chainsaw and cuts your leg off.
Yeah, I don't, we're not, we're not taking that chainsaw.
So it's going to be basically, you know, a hammer and a drill or something, right?
Like stud finders, I think.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. There, that's much safer.
Hard, hard to get.
Yeah. I'd be surprised.
That sounds like experience.
They all point to me.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is the authorization to apply for the annual local prevention council grant in the amount of $5,342 to fund substance abuse prevention programs. Ms. Allard.
Be it resolved, the town council approves Resolution Number 101724-2. Be it resolved that the town council authorizes application for and accepts and appropriates the local prevention council grant in the amount of $5,342 to fund substance abuse prevention programs.
We have motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Walsh, discussion on this, Shaun?
Yeah, this is a grant program we've applied to consistently over the years. So this is just appropriating those funds in support of increasing public awareness of substance abuse prevention disorders and mental health services, motion of mental health services in the town.
And this is obviously something we've done in the past, then, and received?
Yep.
Excellent.
Is it, sorry, is it for specific uses other than the, than the settlement funds we've been using for, you know, counseling and things? It's kind of a. I think it's all in the same kind of category, right? Mental health and substance abuse.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. All those in favor, motion passes unanimously. Which brings us to item number five, the, the main reason we convened this special meeting tonight to discuss the disposition of school and town properties. This is intended to be kind of a brainstorming session to just kick off what will be probably a series of meetings over the next couple of years as we determine what to do after the new elementary schools are in place. And we have some buildings and some properties that, that will have the ability to decide what to do with. So this is intended to be purely brainstorming. And I know, Shaun, did you want to put something up?
I can put it up on the screen, yeah, just to sort of guide the discussion a little bit. I just have some very basics about each of the property, each of the properties. And I also have, of course, the GIS. We can hop around if folks needed, familiarize themselves with anything.
So I think the, the discussion tonight, at least for, for now, will center around Darcy School, Chapman School. We can throw in Humiston into that if, if you want, as well as the property next to Norton that we purchased, the house that's there on North Brooksville.
Sorry, just going to, this one's, yeah. All right, so again, we can hop around, but I just thought it would be helpful just to familiarize folks with what we're talking about. So, in no particular order, but starting with Chapman Elementary School, again, 38 Country Club Road. It's a property size, 9.2 acres, right across from the prison. Building itself is 25,000 square feet, zoned R20. And then I just, for this one, put what we have it on the assessor's list. Of course, this is not a taxed property. And this is going off of Marshall and Swift valuation. So it is not intended to be a market valuation in any way. That's just what we have for the land, the building, and the outbuildings in their current, you know, very depreciated state. But that, that's, again, we can hop around, and I can put some of, some more information up on the screen from the GIS or anything else if anyone needs to kind of familiarize themselves. But I'll just quickly go through these three properties that Peter just mentioned. Darcy School, everyone knows, of course, where this is, up closer to 84 off Wadbury Road.
It's pretty big, it is. Someone does have big that piece.
Yeah, that's why, yeah, it's kind of helpful to see, see the full property map. That's Huckins Road, of course, on the north side there, on the back side of Darcy School's property.
It's to the left more hilly, though?
Yeah, it's, yeah, yeah, it goes hilly up towards the left, everything does, up towards 84. Worth noting, technically on the property record, oh, I don't have my mouse up there, I guess, but you see next to the ball field, there's an RWA pump building there. It's technically a separate property owned by the, yeah, you can see it. It's highlighted because they, that's their facility there within, within the property boundaries. Zoned R20 also, all these properties are. The building itself is a little under 24,000 square feet. And you'll see the assessor, Marshall and Swift property card valuations as they are on the website currently on our list.
Shaun, for those of us who weren't on P and Z, R20 is?
It's a residential, yep, residential zone.
Half acre.
Half acre, say that, thank you, yeah.
Yeah.
Exactly. I think it's the number 20,000. And then the next sort of non-school property, the balance of 422 North Brooksville, Jason to Norton School. You'll recall, we purchased this at auction a year ago for $203,000. The property was a full .77 acres. The balance, if we extend the property line straight down there and subdivide the property for purposes of, it ultimately becomes the driveway for the new Norton School, just outside the red rectangle there. Leaves a, the house property. We do have the encroachment permit and everything finalized, and we will probably be paving in the new driveway. Because remember, the old, the old driveway and garage is now demoed and gone and part of the Norton property, yeah, Norton property. We will be, while we have the paving companies in town right now, they're planning to go over and pave in that driveway in the next week or two.
Where's the driveway on that?
That's a good question. The old driveway is there, I'm trying to remember where, I don't remember honestly which side of it the new driveway is going in. Believe it's right there on the right. That's my recollection.
And the 1562 square feet, that's?
That's what the house is now.
Oh, that's the house, okay.
Yeah, it's just the house, and the house is, just to be very clear, for those of us that have been in it, it's stripped down to studs. It is, takes some significant work.
How old is it?
Good question. Pull it up, I think it's.
Forty's, thirties, forties?
Somebody said it was one of the original houses.
Yeah, it's older than that.
Yeah, I think so.
Because there was a house across the street that's supposed to be the sister house to it.
Exactly.
Yeah, kind of diagonal across it. Give me a second, I'll just go in here. Should be on the, oops, that goes on the wrong one, hold on.
1860.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there it is, here we go, thank you. It's in, you know, it's certainly in rough shape inside, I'll tell you that.
Is it structurally sound?
I, I don't, I don't know. I haven't evaluated, I think it, I think so. I don't, I don't, I'm not aware of any issues with it, it's structurally.
So we have to think about whether we want to keep that property, sell it to a developer who can rehab the house and sell it?
Or tear down the house and start again.
There's a pickleball court here.
How many acres do you need for pickleball?
A few there, never have enough.
Remember the residents.
I know, I know.
So, again, we can hop around, I'm not sure if Peter, if you wanted to start on any in particular, but those are the three properties we want to just sort of start brainstorming now.
What can we sell that property for? I mean, what, I mean, you have, we paid 203, but we could probably get all that back plus, right, maybe?
That's a good question. I don't, you know, I, I don't know, is the short answer.
You don't want to buy it?
Yeah, I think the, what is land, what is a, you know, half acre of land going for in the south end?
Three quarter, yeah.
But you've got to demo a building.
No, that's right, it's a half, because we, it was three quarter with the other piece.
I know, something like an 18th century house, one of the things we're working on in the historic district commission is a demolition ordinance, which would mean, you know, providing the town, providing people in the town the ability to come and take a house like that.
Move it.
Or disassemble it and move it, yeah. So that might be an option to think about, using that as an incentive, you know, come take the house for free and move it to wherever you want. Because I hate to see it just torn down and it doesn't have any value to anybody.
I think it was well worth us buying the property because we got that part of land that we need. And I don't think we're going to lose any money on this. I think we'll get our money back on it, it's just a matter of what we want to do with it.
Something like that valuable to the town as just space? I don't, I mean, not, not above and beyond anything else. I mean, you can see where it kind of fits in with the other properties around it, I mean, I've asked that.
The other resident, residential area. And, and remember too, that the new Norton is going to be way in the back of that property.
Right, right.
And really, it's so far removed from what is going to be the school that it, it really doesn't, by the time you send the kids out to recess, they walked up there, they'd have to turn around and come back.
Right, right. But the, the new driveway is going in the, the right.
In the white.
Yeah, pretty much, yeah, so I mean, obviously, anyone who has that house, they're still, you know, they're away from the school, they're still going to be close to the traffic coming out, buses or anybody coming out from that traffic. It's going to be relatively, relatively close. I mean, that's just, but only at, obviously at certain points in the day.
The driveway is assuming, the new driveway we're putting is assuming they're going to keep that house. Is that, so the driveway is going to be attached? If it's there, if somebody wants to keep the house, the driveway will be right on the side of it, yeah.
Is there any call for additional parking near the school?
Not, well, there is, but not that I think this property can really.
It's a long, it's a long walk if you're going to park there and go back.
Yeah. Jeff?
Just a couple of things on this. At the foreclosure sale, I probably told you this at a council meeting last year, there was a lot of activity and a lot of interest. So if you did have a desire to explore the sale of the property, my recommendation would be I can get you a copy of the bidder's list, and you can go to the person that we outbid and see if they're still interested in the property. The other thing is, the net purchase price by the town, we got all of our liens that we foreclosed. Because the way it worked was, our tax liens were.
Thirty or thirty-seven thousand?
But the, the purchase price far exceeded the debt. So we applied to the court for supplemental judgments, we got all the W. It ended up being about $35,000 that we recouped. So your net purchase price is probably closer to $170,000.
So, Peter, I'm of the opinion that we should seriously consider disposing of this sooner than later. The house that sits on there is going to just continue to deteriorate or become a liability for us the longer it's there. We really have no use for it with the schools. It makes sense to repurpose it as a single-family lot in the subdivision and gain. I'm not sure if we can do that. Jeff, you would know more. If we go back to one individual, we'd have to go out to a competitive process. I just don't know what we're, what we're capable of doing. But, and it would be, it would probably be worthwhile to, to have someone who has knowledge of this, your group, Greg maybe or something, to look at that house to see if there's any interest in it. And maybe if we go out to an RFP, or we go out to just add some, some points or some favoritism to anyone who's interested in restoring the house, if we think that's of value to the town, if that makes sense. So, but I would for one say, this is one property that doesn't seem like it makes sense to just wait. Seems like we should move, market's good right now, it's a nice neighborhood, and might want to just be careful with sightline easements and stuff to make sure.
I was going to mention that, yeah, we, it, given where, and you've seen how overgrown the property was, certainly before the town took it over, and now that we're maintaining it recently, we're, we're keeping it in better condition certainly than it was. We took down some of the trees. But as it did encroach, fortunately, there wasn't a driveway there, or, you know, then, there will be in the future. And again, the schools and public works has had to maintain that sidewalk a few times when it wasn't being cleared in the, in the winter. But I, we could maybe take some measurements or whatever, but if, if there was sort of a sightline easement, because you will have buses exiting, that it would be good to know that whoever took it in the future has to keep maybe some area clear in the very front.
DOT probably, it's probably in the DOT, or the Drax.
Well, if they moved the house, they got to have setbacks anyway, right? I mean.
If they rebuild it, if they rebuild it, the house would have to go back.
That would mean, that would mean just to put trees and shrubs in the front, yeah. That's just my opinion. And I just, for this one, I would think that it seems like there's value in just moving on this one personally.
Yeah, I agree, I agree, I agree.
Okay, because following up on John's question, and I, I agree with John's question, and I assume someone's already looked at this, but where the house is now, there's no, there's no sightline issues now currently?
Not the house itself, it was always vegetation.
Vegetation, okay. So, so it's like that, so that's always, that's, so that, I mean, and I assume that had always been looked at, because obviously otherwise it wouldn't make sense to be relying on that as a, as an exit driveway. But, yeah, so obviously, if they, if somebody rebuilt it, it probably would have to be pushed back by the current zoning, would now push it back even further.
Again, there was no driveway there now. Right now, you go there and it's, the property fence goes, and it's all wood chipped, that's going to be an outdoor play area right now. So some of those problems may not be exactly as they were before, because, but it also wasn't a driveway. The driveway is going to be right there from the road.
Is the historical district commission aware of this property? Have they figured this out?
It's not in the district.
Oh, I know, but there.
Is the society?
Subinterest to them, I would think, right?
Well, I mean, again, it's, the historic district has purview over only a certain group of houses.
Right.
What they're looking to do is have an ordinance, a demolition delay ordinance that says, however, however it's worked out, timeline, if your house is built before nineteen, or 1920, just use a date, that it's, there's a 180-day wait before you can, if that, someone bought this, they, and they wanted to tear it down, to provide the greater good, the ability to take that house and disassemble it, move it rather than put it in the dumpster.
When do you need to make sure that it is, like, I mean, if it's infested with termites or something like that? I mean, so you'd have to have that inspected first to make sure that it is rehabable.
Someone who's going to take that property is going to come and look at it.
Well, I mean, you're saying to put a 180-day hold on it. I say, I want to, I, I think you'd have to first find out if it's rehab, if you can rehabilitate it first before you put a 180-day hold on it. You could, and I understand that, yeah.
And I know, I do know, Jim, as the former liaison to the historic district, I know that that property was in part of discussions, knowing, knowing, before the town acquired it, there was some discussion about it, knowing that although it was outside the district, knowing the age and knowing the history of it, and knowing where it was heading, you know, as far as its condition. Because I believe the same person who owned that piece, that property may own the, the house, that, so that turret house at the, the glass house at the corner on, on South Brooksville. So I think there was some discussion there that, you know, that, because it's in the same category, even though not, even though this one's outside that, that, you know, whether there was something that, that could be done, you know, on this. So they had talked about that in the past as well, as maybe either working on this property or trying to find somebody. But that was before they knew that the town was potentially interested in acquiring that piece, so. So, but it did, it was something, I know the historic district commission had discussed before the town acquired it, if there was some way to salvage or save this, this home. Because it is, it is historic, although outside the district.
And someone might purchase it for whatever we decide to sell it for, to rehab it, and then this 180-day wait is a moot point.
Yeah.
The 203 is, is after we got our lien money, or?
No.
So then we took off?
We paid 203 into court, and then we got back all our lien money. So like I said, the net purchase price was $170,000.
One other, just brief, but small note, but important to the neighbor across the street, the sister house, as you said, which I believe is this house here? Oh, my mouse isn't showing up up there, but to the lower left. She both left us a note soon after we purchased it, but also called me a couple of times. Is very interested in a large blue stone slab threshold that I think was under the front door. She would like to have it at her house if I, if it is demoed.
If you're not going to do that, you're not going to use that.
There was definitely an assumption it was getting demoed, and she very much was hoping that that slab would get moved across the street to her. So I, I said I would pass that request.
So what, what I would suggest is maybe we have somebody take a look at it and see if it's, can be rehabbed first. I mean, I, I think that's something that we should know. And if, if it's not, then we, then we just sell it as land, I mean.
I would assume we would sell it the way it is, right? And then somebody can, if they, obviously, we're not going to demo that house, right? I mean, it's, it's going to go the way it is, so.
Say that again, Jeff.
We have an appraisal from the foreclosure.
Okay.
If you wanted to update it, it wouldn't be a big deal.
Is that something that building, that our building department could look at and see if it's structurally sound, or we'd have to get a?
Structural engineer?
Yeah, I think. Yeah.
Probably not the full analysis you're looking for.
I think we, I mean, I would, if we're going to sell it, I would just sell it as is and, you know, and, you know, let people figure that out. Whether, whether it could be rehabbed, and obviously, rehabbers would come in and make that determination, or they may say, you know what, this thing is just not salvageable, and then.
Someone that goes in there and is interested is going to know pretty quick, especially if it's exposed.
Yeah, because you're going to know, people going in, right? You're either going to go in thinking I'm rehabbing it, or you're going to go in thinking I'm junking this house and I'm just going in. And it's going to be two, probably two different types of, you know, buyers. But either one may in fact still be interested in that house. And I would assume that even though we've lopped off, you know, some of it off the right, that sort of excess land probably doesn't affect the value of the property with any sign, any, with any real, it may knock it off a little bit, but it's still, as long as it stays within the same, you know, as long as it stays within the zoning of that area, you know, that's just excess land that probably knocks a little bit of value off. But we're probably looking at roughly the same that we got from the appraisal.
When the school is complete, what, and we no longer need that area, what's that, we just going to turf it, put turf there, or?
No, it's going to be a driveway.
It's actually driveway.
It's going to be a driveway.
I can pull it up if you want.
Once the school is, yeah, the one in the front is demoed and the one is there in the back, there's going to be a separate in and out, so that'll be the out driveway.
It's an exit only with dedicated left turn lane.
Jeff, if I'm not mistaken, one of the disadvantages we had when this, when we first went up for auction was that we weren't allowed to look in the building. It was a sight unseen purchase, was that correct?
There was no, there was no interior appraisal. We didn't have access to this.
Didn't have access, I didn't think so.
Boarded up.
But you have since been in there?
We have since been in there, and we, and there was a lot of property in there, there was a lot of collected items, and like from old car dealerships, old bumpers, you know, Chevrolet parts, whole host of things. A lot of tools, a lot of lathes.
Go for the library.
So we've been, we've watched about the number, but I, I.
Stuff that people can rent.
Yeah, we've sold a number of those items. I can try to find out from marketing and how much we made off of those, but I know we listed a lot of them. There's collectors for a lot of that stuff.
The guy that owned it, that's kind of the same.
That's his thing, yeah.
It appraised at 220 a year ago.
Do you want to reach out then to either historic district or historical society and just put out a feeler that if anyone has an interest and just give them a heads up that we are likely going to be moving on this, this parcel? And then just get a sense, and, you know, we may not need to appraise it. I, I, my, ultimately, I'd like to just be able to sell it as is and just, you know.
How does that work? Do we have to go, like, what's the process for selling a house from the town? We just, if someone comes and says, I'm interested?
Well, the sale of real property under the charter requires a public bidding process, but you could waive it.
So we find out, someone was looking to?
Yeah, if we get an appraise, let's say it appraises at 230, and somebody wants to pay 230 for it, then the only reason to put it out to bid is if you want to give everybody the same opportunity.
Yeah, well, if there's like two or three people who might want to do it, then?
Then you just set a sale price, and then you end up getting multiple bids at the same price like we did at the foreclosure sale.
And if we want to, if somebody just wants to buy the house and move it, will we sell it, pay for a dollar and move it?
You mean the structure itself?
Yeah. They want to move it to another location or something.
That's a good question. How would we do that?
Well, I mean, it depends on, that's what the water authority does with old houses. And sometimes you get bids and sometimes you don't. You know, I mean, if the idea is to get some cash and divest the town of the property, you sell the whole property.
But if someone wanted to commit and say, buy, or take possession just of the building, clear the, clear the lot, and then we sell the lot? Two separate?
Two separate transactions? You could do that.
Probably more of a headache, though, right?
Takes longer.
And do we think, what's the, just out of curiosity, in that appraisal, do, what, what do they, how do they equate the house versus the land of the?
Most of the value was in the land.
Right?
The land was valued at like $155,000.
That's my fear, I mean, the value of it's going to be in the land, not the house itself. But I was just curious how that broke down. So if you gave up the house, in theory, you're looking at, okay, $50,000, $50,000, $60,000 difference if you then just sell the land as land?
Yeah, you're going to get less money if you want somebody to come take the house because they're not going to want to pay much money for it.
Right, for the house, right.
So why don't you do that and, you know, at least put it out there and see if there's any interest or whatever? You know, let us know what, what kind of process they want to go through or whatever, or how long they need to decide. With the understanding that if we sell the entire parcel, land and house as is, that someone may very well want to rehab it. But we're at least giving them the first, the right of first refusal, so to speak, on it, so, okay.
And if they need to get, if anyone needs to get inside, just let me know.
Let's move to, was that the first one, Shaun?
Yeah, we kind of, I, I, in no particular order, I just put.
Let's, yeah, let's go to Chapman.
Chapman, okay.
What's the outdoor that's worth 38 grand?
You know, I, I, not certain, but there's a shed. Yeah, there's a shed.
There's a shed, I can't possibly.
They have September buildings, I assume.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't put a lot, I, yeah, it, it's possible, I mean, these could be somewhat older numbers, too, I don't know.
I was gonna say, that doesn't, it doesn't really show up on this.
I mean, that's a piece of property that I, I think we should find a use for. I mean, I, my opinion is, I mean, we're, we're short on fields and things, and, you know, it's close to the park, it's across the street from the prison, so, I mean, I, I just don't know, you know, I think the school building itself is probably a tear down. I mean, I'm not, it's in such bad shape, I, I can't imagine rehabbing it for anything else.
Well, and the, the ADA issues with it, oh, owner.
Has there been any talk amongst the town about reusing it or anything?
No, I mean, I've talked about it with, I, I've put it to department heads a few times just for ideas and whatnot, but honestly, I think given some of the same considerations for public access, certainly to the second floor, which is a challenge here, and just knowing kind of the dollars involved, there's no, there's no, you know, overarching need that, from, from strictly a department operational level, you know, whether it could be incorporated in some sort of, oh, yeah, it could be a variety of things, whether the structure itself could be reused, adapted into a different way, maybe it's, it could, it could be housing, we have a housing, you know, need and challenges. There's been some talk of, you know, there's homelessness initiatives and other things that maybe it could be incorporated into. But, but for offices, we haven't kind of identified anything that wouldn't take so much, you know, I mean, if we had unlimited funds and you wanted to, you know, move the police department away from, from kind of the front of Highland School, 'cause Highland School's access is challenging, and you wanted that to be your new place, well, sure, but you're talking tens of millions of dollars that we just don't have to spend. Animal, nothing else has come yet, animal control. Have a run other place.
Bad ACO. Were, were you, refresh my memory, were you also contacted about this one?
I wasn't. Trish was.
Yeah. But was somebody, was somebody else? So, okay, that's what, I knew some, I knew somebody told me that. So, Tricia apologizes, she had every intention to be here and, and was contacted by an individual who expressed some interest in this parcel. She had a dental procedure today that didn't go according to plan, so she is not with us tonight and apologizes. But Sean, why don't you, 'cause it's very similar to, you know, to the person that reached out to you.
Well, and I, I shouldn't oversell it. I was walking out of an event at Rebel. Somebody kind of caught me for about no more than ten or fifteen seconds. But he said, hey, you know, when the town starts thinking about selling or reusing a proposal, he had this idea of turning Chapman School into, I believe he said, a horse farm or a horse-
Yeah.
For a program, I believe he said, either a family member or someone close to him has Down Syndrome, and there was this program that he wanted to get off the ground involving horses and the property. And so, I, I, I said, hey, sounds interesting. I was literally, I think I was being tugged by my nine-year-old, 'cause I was trying to go, he wanted to go home. So, it was not an in-depth conversation. I asked him to, you know, reach out with, with his idea. I just haven't heard anything, and but it sounded like Trish was contacted, directed.
So, the, the-
Same person?
Yeah, 'cause it's the same proposal, unless it's a very big coincidence.
The program that she was contacted about is actually called High Hopes. Let me go back. High Hopes Therapeutic Writing. So, it's, but I guess the individual was, and this was kind of an example of what this individual proposed to Cheshire, or to Tricia, but also wanted to include like an agricultural aspect, and so there is, you know, and I'm, I hear what you're saying, but I know there is some, some interest in, in doing something else with that.
Well, is, is this group looking for us to, to give them this property, to give that on, or purchase it?
We haven't gotten that far, so, yeah.
Okay, 'cause my, my question was gonna be, do they need the building, or is the, you know, is, is the building-
Yeah, it's, they need the-
Of course, it's can't go up the sets.
It's the land.
Yeah, right.
It's all in the land.
'Cause I do, I mean, I know, I mean, obviously, I, I understand that, that program, 'cause, you know, obviously, there's gonna be lots of use for, potential for a big piece of land. I do know that this came up last year, or actually, earlier this year. John, you and I sat in on those meetings at Park and Rec, you know, there's a, you know, conflicts with, you know, baseball and other sporting activities in town, and, you know, the question is, you know, field usage and, you know, are, you know, right now, there's at least two baseball programs, and, and there's conflicts as to who gets. So, one of the things, you know, that was discussed is, you know, could, you know, right now, some of the, like, the programs use the fields that are currently and, and maintain those fields at Chapman now, you know, to get them up to playability. And so, the question is, you know, I wouldn't, you know, in the end, the concern would be, you know, whether, you know, you know, whether we expand the, the availability of fields, you know, on, on a property like this, or if we get rid of them, then we obviously, we, we may exacerbate the, you know, the situation of baseball fields and the limited number that there are already in town. So, especially for the younger groups who use those smaller, the, I mean, there's, there's the smaller fields here at Chapman, but I do know there's also, they're running into conflicts at that medium level. You know, there's, you know, at the, I think it's a six, seventy-five foot baseball diamonds, then you go up to the ninety feet for the, the older kids. But there's, there's issues as far as availability of, of all the fields at all of those sizes. Now, Chapman has a couple of the, the smaller size fields, but, so, but I mean, so to get rid of those, you know, if, or, you know, that's gonna be, create some other issues, or, I know one of the, the proposals was, hey, if you're gonna do something with this property, could you expand on field usage with that? So, I'm sure that's something else that we wanna look at, too, as far as whether, you know, whether it's a third party helping, you know, this charitable type thing, or, you know, increasing our field availability. 'Cause we're kind of, we're out of, we're out of a lot of land on, for, for fields where we already currently have, so if we're gonna build more fields, we need to find more land to put those fields on.
What would be the cost to demo the building and build fields?
Probably a million dollars, at least, right?
Say at least, yeah.
So, I was gonna say, I mean, I, I think this is a, I mean, that assessment is probably more than it's likely to be worth, particularly if you look at a five million dollar building value. I mean, I can't imagine that those buildings are anywhere near that value, but it is a substantially, substantial piece of property with, with tremendous value for the town. And I, I don't think we should jump at any one particular non-public use, even if it's a charitable use, or, you know, it may be that's the best use, but I think there's a lot at stake here to start homing in on one non-public use early on in this process. I think we should keep an open mind to alternative uses for the property if it's going to not be used for the municipality. But I think we should look first at municipal uses personally. It's substantial enough, whether it's Park and Rec related, whether it's for other uses. Make sure that we don't have a municipal use that, that needs that property before we commit to anything else. And the other thing I'm thinking of on the, on the semi-short term is, if we are looking at any other schoolwork, could this be used as swing space or partial swing space, and do we want to lose that opportunity if we're looking at doing something else? 'Cause, 'cause that could be a real detriment to trying to do something else if we have to find swing space to do anything. So, we ought to make sure that we're not in need of swing space before we think about disposing of this property. But I don't, I would not jump at anything here. I think we, this needs to be a thorough kind of process, both in terms of municipal use and then potential private use, because there's a lot at stake here. It's a good-sized property. Building may not be worth anything, it may be. I mean, I really don't know.
Do you, do you think the first step, that is to, to go to Park and Rec and ask them to look at this property and see what they envision it to be used for, or?
I, I don't, I don't, you know, I mean, I don't see it as the, I mean, as the most. I, I think, from, from a field standpoint, I mean, you get one field in there, if you have to take the building down to get another, I'm not even sure. It's a lot of expense.
So, you're thinking maybe of a building, putting a building there or something?
I don't know. I mean, you can get, it looks like you have one athletic field in there. It's a lot to give up for one athletic field. I mean, it'd be nice to-
It's a million-dollar baseball field.
Yeah.
But we're charging.
Not to say not to, but it seems like that might be a stretch to see that this is the best place for more athletic fields.
So, I, I, I get that, I, I appreciate, you know, 'cause it's, except for the, except for obviously, the dip getting down into the delivery area, it's relatively flat.
Yeah.
So, you know, that, and obviously, they had the dip down there, so, but just out of curiosity, I'm just based on something that John raised, what's the, what's the capacity of Chapman School, in terms of student, if stu- Okay, so, I'm just, you know.
I think it was three.
I don't think four could fit in there.
It's kind of thing where it used to be four.
Probably used to be four, and it's like hovered around.
Right, 'cause like, like all the other schools, like, some of those, what used to be X number has shrunk because of either special education or other uses of, of classroom sizes, has shrunk the total availability of space. I'm just wondering, just when you, 'cause John, I mean, you raised a great point about possible swing space, but the question is, how much swing space do you really have? Like, what, what, no, but I think that's a, that's a great point. You know, we're, we're building two new elementary schools and, you know, obviously, potential for other schools in the, you know, at some point out in the future, but, you know, the question is whether that's something that's big enough to, you know, to, to act as that swing school. If you're gonna do like a middle school, like, is that big enough? And I guess my other question is, is, if we had to, is, oh, this is only nine point two acres. Would Darcy at twelve acres be, although, not by spanning topography, how, what's the size, what, was it at least ten acres for a middle school? Fifteen acres, twenty acres, what?
I thought it was fifteen.
I thought it was fifteen or twenty.
Okay, that, okay.
That's the standard.
The standard.
Right.
They could've done something if we really wanted them. I mean, anything's kind of possible.
Right, 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 right.
Right, okay, I was just, I was just curious. Who goes, I was just thinking about whether that's future uses, but, right, even if something this size, even, even Darcy may not be big enough to, to cover those, especially with the topography at Darcy, that's a little, that, that really limits your use of that field.
It's been about four years since I've heard the phrase swing space, I think.
Brings you back, huh?
One thing I wanted to mention was about the fields, I mean, obviously, we're sensitive to the field's needs and stuff, but once we, once we move, obviously, once we move Chapman to the new school, we're gonna have new fields there. I'm wondering, and I thought that the baseball thing was somewhat unsolved, at least resolved for now, anyway.
It was gonna come, it's something.
What I'm wondering is if, if John has kind of, with the new schools, new fields, has he done a kind of an analysis of what we have in terms of field space at that point for baseball?
Not yet, I mean, he's very aware of it. We haven't done anything in-depth or formal, but I, and I will say, as a member of the building committee as well, you know, they're building, frankly, both schools with flat green grass area, but their, the school building committee is not selecting baseball versus soccer. I've heard, frankly, from both of those groups, or all of those type groups, whether it's a diamond or rectangle, that's gonna be kind of a town council decision, as we sort of, you know, actually manipulate that green space on the map once it's in, under construction. Is this one gonna be a ball field, this one gonna be that? And I was gonna raise that same point, that we do have some additional space there. And I will say also, as a father of a kid who's now played in both of those rival baseball leagues, I've seen both sides. I won't pretend they're seeing eye to eye, but this fall, and it is fall ball, but the scheduling has been light years better than it was before in terms of the need. They're, they're, from a scheduling standpoint, they're playing much nicer together, which is good. I've now seen it for both, both leagues.
Which is good, thanks. Thanks, John.
We watched, we watched very-
You saw the peak of it last, last-
Right, so we were there for that meeting, and that was really, uh, good to get them to, in a room to sort of, to rock, paper, scissors for it.
Yes.
Yeah, so it was, better now. Not to say we don't still have some field needs, but I do think with proper scheduling, we're also making some enhancements to our MyRite software system for actual requesting from the groups for fields. We're seeing some of the field shortage, I think, has been exacerbated by some groups kind of being given fields in larger blocks and maybe not using every block of time every week, and so, we're trying to sort that out with a more efficient use of it. We may not have quite the field shortage, it appeared we did, when people were sort of hoarding field space and time. I think it's a little better now.
The only other thought I have on this is, I mean, I understand what you're saying about maintaining it for a while as a possible municipal use. It's just, we're, we're adding two buildings now, and it feels like, I mean, a big reason for school harmonization was to shrink the number of buildings we had and not to maintain it, so, obviously, we need to find, maybe we need to find some use for this, but, you know. Right, and the way the field is, let's sell it, but that's, that's too soon.
Yeah. And I wasn't thinking long-term either, I was just thinking short-term. Long-term, I think there's value here, so I hate to just give up the value without vetting all the various options.
For sure.
Could we do this, talk, maybe come up with a list of our municipal departments and their needs, and, and what their space is now, and if they need space, and so, we have, and with the age of the buildings they're in, things like that, so we could see if there is a need for municipal, to use this for municipal space, or?
I mean, I will say, we've done that, I mean, I've done that around the table with department heads, and I don't wanna speak for all of them, per se, but nothing has come forward that was like, oh, that's what we absolutely need.
Yeah, in preparation for this.
Yeah, we've had conversations about it, you know, I'm all ears, and I'd be happy to bring some forward, but-
Can you put a tall roof on there and the assault shit out of it?
Maybe, yeah. Turn it into a fire station, if it's tall enough. But, yeah, I mean, and, and, you know, I think, like I said before, a sort of a grand reimagining of maybe an entire facility. And again, as we've been investing in, I use the police department as an example, we've been piecemeal.
But we, we know we're gonna need to do something with the animal control over the next few years, too, so, you know, that's something that we, we're gonna need to look into soon, too.
Absolutely, yep. And a portion of this property could certainly serve that, that purpose.
John, I agree with you on the, that we have to be aware of swing space. To me, Darcy presents a much better swing space for us only because this building is so out of compliance with ADA. Whereas Darcy is in much better sho, well, I, I shouldn't, I shouldn't use the word much, it's in better shape for, you know, for that.
Chapman, you, you got three steps just to get to the first floor.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, that was gonna, one of my questions is, if we, right now, obviously, we're grandfathered in sort of on what we're using as for the school, correct? You know, all these ADA, all these ADA issues that keep coming up, or is this, we're sort of grandfathered in a little bit on them, or have we just been?
No, there's no grandfathering in. What it is, is they haven't got, come down on us yet, but they could anytime. I mean, it's because ADA is, you know, it's a law, it's not a choice, and, and they can come down on us anytime they want. And we will have to comply. I know we're doing it at the high school now, so.
So, I, I guess, so that's, like, so if, let's assume we don't use it currently, and, you know, whatever we use it for, that still continues to be a possible issue, ADA issues in that building, whether it's used for a school, or it's used as a department, or whatever, it's still, that, that's still gonna be a potential issue.
Right, and remember, too, yes, it's also, there's no air conditioning in the building, no, there's a lot of the things that, it was a year-round municipal office, you need to make sure you added.
Right.
I'm just not so sure the building is usable. I mean, it's, it's seen as like-
That's my fear with this part.
I've been taking that tour, I, I took the tour when they were, during the renovation, and it was in horrific-
It's not good.
Four years ago, and it was, it hasn't gotten any better.
As a former Chapman chipmunk, I still see it through rose-colored glasses, but, but, but it's, yeah, now, they're, now, whatever they're, whatever they are now, but, you know, they used to be the Chapman chipmunks, and so, right, but my biggest, you know, my big concern would be, no matter what we do with this building, you know, if we're using it for, if we're gonna keep the building, there's, there's a lot of work that's gonna have to go into, into that, and, but obviously, if we don't use it as a building, there's a lot of cost that goes into demoing it as, as well, so.
Sean, can you just check with John Galak and see, are those fields being used at all at this point?
Which ones?
The, the ones at Chapman?
Oh, yes, yeah, ADIers use them, yeah. They also use back now.
Is it like five nights a week and weekends, or is, you know, how, how booked are they?
It's mostly just for them there.
Okay.
And I would say it's, it's a number of nights a week. All right, now, we're at the end of fall ball, but they use them. I'd have to, I'll confirm.
Okay.
It's not every day, but it's a fair number of days.
And they put a lot of the work into getting them up to, you know, or at least help-
Yeah, well, Public Works restored both of those fields. You can see even in this image, that was pre-restation. They had gotten overgrown, they hadn't been maintained as a baseball field for five or six years.
Mr. Bowman, first of all, thank you for joining us, but I wanted, I wanted to give you the opportunity, I didn't know if you're here to listen or if you intended to, you know, to speak on any property, but I- know, to speak on any property, but I certainly want to give you that opportunity, should you desire it, before we get too far down the road, so...
I appreciate that, thank you, I'm just here, I think, to listen at this point.
Excellent, okay. But I do think, Sean, your, your point from earlier has to be kind of in the back of our minds as part of the conversation, that we are, we are dealing with some, some homeless issues, and I know there is a, a nonprofit that's in the process of forming to address this issue, so, you know, and we're, again, we're still two years away, this is preliminary, but it's a good opportunity for us to brainstorm, but I think, I think your point is well-taken, Sean, that we have to try to keep that in mind too, as we look at properties around town. Do you want to take us then to, to Darcy?
Sure, so, again, a little bit larger property, you can see 12.3 acres, again, currently a, about 24,000 square feet, which is a little larger than I thought it was, but it's currently kindergarten and pre-K, and early intervention programming. Definitely much more of a slope, I'm sure we've all been there before, slopes down to Wadbury Road and up the hill towards Huckins, and, again, yeah, so it, you know, this one, again, as you can see, more surrounded by residential properties in the area, close to 84, you know, certainly probably has some value from, from that standpoint, and again, it's, it's also, you know, similar to Chapman, it's a dated building, it does have, but it does have sort of level access by the time you circle around to the parking lot in the back, which is kind of a, there's a technically front door in the front there where the drop-off is, but that's up a long ramp, but around the back, you're kind of at-grade level entrance to Darcy.
The left on the left, is that buildable?
I don't know, I don't know for sure.
The wooded area, it, it's got a pretty steep topography change.
Yeah, so do you think maybe like half, half of that is buildable lots, maybe?
Which half it is, I don't know. You can always, you know, you can always put something on the hill, you could, you could obviously do some sort of cul-de-sac in there.
The right side, it's really deep.
I suspect it's buildable, at least in large portions.
I don't, you're not pretending to be an expert.
You could probably pull up the contours.
Yeah, I could do it.
Yeah. Could we squeeze a hockey rink in there?
I think these weren't working. Oh, there they are.
Yep.
Okay, so it's a...
Yeah, so it goes peak right there.
Yeah, the, see, to the right isn't bad, because the, you've got that playground that's part, in the, in the woods there, tucked up in the back.
Yeah.
That's, that's a pretty big rock roll, I think, on the left here.
Yeah, that one is more than I realized.
That's a little Mesa going.
Yeah.
And, correct me, with the baseball field there, that, for the challengers, is that, that's part of our discussion as to where the, that, that new field may go, the, whatever, what's it called, the miracle field?
Adaptive, adaptive baseball field, yeah, we would not, not recommend putting it there.
No, 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 but that's, but that's...
That's where they are now, right, and it, it's not, there's not really any parking, and in fact, the access to it is not great.
But that will be relocated.
Right, that whole thing would be...
Anymore.
No, that's right.
I'm just saying, but that, that's part of the discussion we've had about this idea possibly putting in this, you know, adaptive field, that would be to take the place of this challenger's field at some point, wherever it's, wherever it's going to go, right, it's, it will replace this, because this will come out.
This one I can see, and I, I think there's a benefit, like I said earlier, John, I think there's a benefit into hanging on to this to see what, what happens with, with school modernization, because I think this presents an opportunity for, for swing space.
It's the same square footage, I had no idea it was the same square footage, I thought it was much smaller.
Hard to believe, yeah, my, both my kids went there.
I don't remember being that big.
I don't remember being that big.
Yeah, I just pulled it from the property card, it's confirmed, but, there is a lower level on, you know, on the other side, where the cafeteria...
Up at the top there, yeah.
There's, there's not even a gym, really, it's a, it's a combination cafeteria and gym, small area, but again, and to be clear, everything there is not for...
There's no formal cafeteria either, so...
Little, little, you need to update the size of the plumbing fixtures, it's all for kindergarten.
You gotta watch the dodgeball as you're trying to eat lunch, right?
But this one, I could see us, and, and to the location of it, being so far removed from anything in town, I could see us trying to, trying to sell this property at, at some point in time.
So with, with the two properties, I mean, I've done a lot of advice to clients on properties like this, either selling or buying, I always advise our clients to know more than anybody else regarding their property before they either purchased or sold. I, I really think that we need to focus on understanding these properties, both the buildings, the, you know, condition of the buildings, the accessibility issues, et cetera, the cost for demolition, the usability of the parcel, the practical usability of parcel at a level that is not, you know, very deep, but deep enough so that we're not, we're not, you know, making a mistake when we dispose them, it looks like both of them will eventually be disposed, and also what you, what you can do with them for, you know, for instance, Chapman, if we could put fields on there, how many and what will it cost really, what's, what's an approximate cost to do that, so you at least you know that. And I think that should be something maybe the council might want to set a committee up with, supported by town staff, be nice to have the ability to have an architect on both of them to, to provide some consultation on, on the buildings themselves, I, I know we have our building department, but our town staff is generally more experienced in the kind of things that I'm experiencing, which are horizontal areas, you know...
They know the buildings better than anybody.
And they know the buildings pretty well too, so, I, I just think it might be, it might be nice, Peter, to, 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 you know, we have plenty of maps, we can get them together in a logical way, kind of did that with the North End parcel, that have an idea of what, you know, what you might expect in terms of industrial use and other uses up there, if we've got our, that, which is just a suggestion, the, the more we know, as we consider the next steps, the better we are.
Yeah. Okay, those are the three we wanted to take a look at, anybody want to talk about any other properties, or?
You had mentioned Humiston, I mean, is, is, I mean, you know, ultimately with the, is, is the plan to move everybody out of Humiston to the new, to the, the North End school? I mean, I don't, I didn't, okay...
The answer is, the answer is no, there's no, there's no plan right now for the alternative high school, or for the admin portion.
Like, they write that, the, the school staff, okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to, wanted to make sure, so, I mean, obviously, if we do that, if we wanted to get, we'd have to find another, another, we'd have to find a different space.
Yeah. And the, there is a caveat on the Humiston property, when that was given, and, keep me honest here, Sean, when that was given to the town, or whatever, deeded to the town, it has to be used for educational purposes?
I thought, I thought it hurt somewhere that that had been...
That's a pretty broad term.
Right, I thought that had been, I thought that would be on that point.
Yeah, I would have to confirm, I know Jeff was really close, there was an attorney general's process that they either could or go through that would change that, but I don't...
Jeff Solan had the original documents from when it was done, and he, I don't think it, I don't, yeah, I don't think it had to be, I don't think...
Because it's been so old and so long and something like that, right?
Yeah, something like that.
Yeah, I have to confirm, but...
I know this had a, an easy building to deal with, but it's also a very prominent building in the center of town, so we have to be careful with what happens there.
Right, well, absolutely.
I mean, it also serves the alternative high school pretty well, doesn't it?
It, it does serve the alternative high school, for sure, I'm not sure how, I think they would prefer a different location in the future.
They did use the picture of the kid climbing up the steps.
We were going for school modernization. SMC, yeah.
I thought it was in Chapman.
Both.
That was, that was one of both.
That was Humiston.
Any other properties anybody wants to chat about for now? Okay, well, thank you for, for the discussion, I think it's good, I know if, I'm sure Noel has good notes, but I do as well, so...
Perfect, appreciate it.
All right. With that, we'll entertain a motion to go into executive discussion for land acquisition and contracted negotiations and preliminary contract status relative to Chesapeake, Health District, to include the town attorney, town manager, and our, our clerk.
Management specialist.
Our management specialist.
Moved.
Second.
So moved.
Second.
And so Mr. Jenks and Mr. Velliver are all in favor, we are in executive session. Paul, thank you.